Would you sign in, please? Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present, an accorum has been declared.
Thank you. We've got, next up, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Very good. Next up, we have citizen comment. I will, as a prelude, say that if you are here to speak on behalf of the marijuana issue, we have a public hearing on the temporary moratorium. And if you wish your comments to be heard at that time, that would be the appropriate time for the public hearing. I do have, other than that, I do have some cards here. Ms. Mandy Pittman. Alamosa City welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak can obtain the card at the city clerk at the beginning. Anybody else need a card? Thank you, Mandy.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Alamosa Farmers Market. The council was generous enough to give us some financial support before the season started, so I'm here to thank you for that and give you an update on our season so far. So first of all, thank you. The money that we've gotten from the city has been very helpful. It's allowed us to improve the market, and it's allowed us to have, create some more signage, and make our market more accessible to more people. Our market has been hit with the fun, strange weather that we've been experiencing this spring and summer and now into the fall. We had some hiccups with our Wednesday market with very strong rain where we would have, you know, six of us holding tents down to keep them from blowing away. But we persevered. Our Wednesday market went the full eight-week season. It was attended as I would expect, you know, about 50 people in a good week, closer to 20, two dozen or so on a slower week. But it got people out to the Rio Grande Farm Park, which I think was a good thing. And it was about as close as you can get to where your food comes from as we've ever been able to do with the farmers market before. So that was a positive for this season. And then our Saturday market, which still has two more weeks, has been going strong, again persevering through rain. This is the first time in my five seasons running the market where we've ever had, ever had rain on a Saturday, let alone like call off the rest of the market kind of rain. Last week, we had to close about 12:30 because the vendors and the staff were just bedragging, and it was just a rough day, but they, you know, they were there for a few hours and they did meet the needs of some of the customers that were able to show up. And then we have our last two weeks of the season. So we'll have a market this week, and then the 14th of October is when we wrap up the season. Our vendors have requested that I ask each of you as a council people to consider coming to the market. And if you come to the market and shop with the vendors, you might point out to them that you are a member of the city council. Because perhaps some of you have patronized the market this season, but they don't necessarily all recognize your faces. So it's really good for the vendors to see city officials at the market. It lets them know that not only you support it as a councilman, but also a member of the community. So if you're able to come to one of our last two weeks, I highly recommend it. And to entice you, I have brought some apples to share with you, and then those present that came from last week's market, they're from a Colorado grower. They are Honeycrisp apples, and they are the like sweetest, crunchiest apples I've had all season. And my kids have been sneaking them since Saturday, so there's not quite as many as I'd hoped to bring today. But they're very good apples, and I just wanted to give them to all of you and to the city, the city members present, to show our thanks to the farmers market, to the city of Alamosa. So thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Appreciate that. Very good.
Mayor?
I'll give you a couple, go ahead, Councilor Veale.
Thank you. A question for Heather. Can you remind us and the public, the money that we gave to them came out of what, where did it come out of?
I believe we pulled that, I need to double-check. It was either the, I believe it was the economic development line item out of non-departmental. And Mandy, was it $1,000? It was $1,000 support.
And it wasn't out of the sponsorship?
No.
Okay.
It was out of the economic development. And at that point, the farmers market was struggling on if they needed to increase their rates to the farmers, or how they were going to cover some of their costs. And I think we wanted to keep the rates reasonable for the vendors.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mandy. And thank you, council. And we'll, the next person is Ruthie Brown. Thank you, Ruthie.
Thank you. Is tonight a night for public hearing on the budget, or is that, what's first reading, or?
You can clearly talk about it now during the public, but the public hearing, the official public hearing is the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll just plant another seed, because I had a parent in today with a special needs 18-year-old. I would just love to have playground equipment in every park, not one park, but all parks. It's time, it's morally right. So that's a very strong opinion of mine, and I'm not going to let it drop. And the other thing, because people in Alamosa talk, and of course, I talk to a lot of people, but it would be nice for business people and community people to kind of know what we're doing to determine positions and develop strategies as far as the pink elephant parking lot. You know, I've made it, I mean, I believe we should, the city or somebody, the county or whoever, should buy it. I've had two people, one with the farmers market and one with the economic development group, say, "Well, if we buy it, we have to spend half a million dollars to pave it." Well, you don't. It's a parking lot now, but we certainly need it for the community. But it'd be nice to be, I don't know why it has to be exactly an executive session to talk about that. So just an opinion.
Thank you, Ruthie. Judy McNeil-Smith. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. I'll just take a few minutes. I'm the Director of Program Services at La Puente, and our Adelante program, which has been serving homeless families for over 20 years, has had a shift in terms of not a two-year program and then fall off the cliff. We're really working with folks in terms of providing individually what each family needs to be successful and transition out of homelessness. And so we're going to be having, it's not a fundraiser, we want to have a mission-sharing program update event where you can come and actually hear about what we're doing, the approach that we're adopting, and hear some of the stories about our families and what we're doing. So I'm just here to personally invite each of you. I'll invite the audience as well. It's Friday, October 20th, $15, and that's just to cover the hors d'oeuvres that we're going to be having there. But it really is an opportunity for folks to interact with our staff and to hear about some of the strength-based and exciting things we're doing to help folks transition out of homelessness and be successful as part of our community. So I'm going to give you each an invitation.
Thank you, Judy. Is that $20 a head? $20 apiece?
$15.
Oh, $15. Thank you.
And I have to cover, and you know what? If you can't handle it, I'll take yours.
Oh, no, no. No, I just, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
$12 for the lawns. And you answer. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Next, we have Chloe Everhart.
My name's Chloe Everhart, and I actually wanted to invite you guys to play a game, to practice spotting logical fallacies. It's kind of become one of my favorite tools to help me understand arguments, and I think that kind of by going over them, everybody else will find them really useful. Knowing and practicing logical fallacies helps us think more clearly and listen more actively. I made these papers, and kind of in a game format, so I invite you to look over them for a minute and kind of think about what your arguments are about, and think about if people are using fallacies to convince you of something. I think you hear some of them a lot these days, like slippery slope and false cause are really common. And then I want to express gratitude to the author of YourLogicalFallacies.com for teaching me so much and making such a cool Creative Commons learning tool. So if anybody wants one of these, I've got a bunch of printouts and rainbow pencils. I figure we could all just kind of like stay quiet and then afterwards compare notes and see if you came up with something really clever or something. And then it's also just kind of if something annoys you, you can mark it down, so it's a good way to bust stress in meetings and stuff. So you're all welcome to play if you'd like.
All right. We will, is there a follow-up?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on to Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, you may have had people who had, if you ever want a topic on, who still wanted to speak here rather than at the public hearing, which is fine.
I've got, I've got three cards, actually, and I apologize for that. We'll start out with, I've only got three, so. Why don't we start out with Diana Hall?
Um, is we okay?
Did you like to wait?
I would not have yet.
Okay. How about Terry Smith?
I'll just wait.
Wait as well? Shawna Hobbs?
I'm ready.
You've got, all right. Thank you, Shawna. You've got three minutes.
All right. Thanks. Okay. So I'm here to introduce a new nonprofit organization that's been started here in the valley. This is to help people that have a financial need and that choose cannabis as their medicine to be able to have access to money that's been donated by growers, dispensaries, and legitimate cannabis businesses in order to help fulfill these people's required daily amount of marijuana for whatever ails them, from cancer to other diseases. And hopefully, we can move it into some other realms to be able to help a lot more people. But I just wanted to let you guys know that CanaPower is a foundation here in Colorado. We have a Facebook page. We are also working on a website at this time. But this is to be able to help provide those funds to people that have serious life-threatening ailments, and also for people that are experiencing other chronic conditions. So I just want to let you guys know that there is now a place that people that need money to have access to products that hopefully voters will approve, there will be a way that they can access that money that doesn't cut into anything that would be considered federally tied funds with. So it's sort of marijuana Medicaid, if you will. So I just want to let you guys know that that's something that's happening here. We've got a lot of people that are standing up and starting to come out of the woodwork, so to speak, and say, "Hey, I want to be a part of this." And they're eager, and they have motivation, and they happen to use cannabis daily. They don't stutter. They're able to eloquently provide information to people that are seriously ill and confused themselves, and to be able to provide them with information that's helpful and beneficial instead of bleak and hopeless. So I just want to be able to provide that information to you guys. That's CanaPower Foundation of Colorado. You can look them up on Facebook. Also, I wanted to invite you guys to come out to our medical shops. I know that none of you have been there because I work there nearly every day. And this is a great opportunity for you guys to be able, with respect to the one time that Mayor and Charlie came out, I apologize, but it's been a long time. And you didn't get to speak with any patients that are out there and that want to be able to talk to you about why the vote is important to them. And also, to see the many retail patients that I turn away, yes, some of them are just thrill seekers coming to Colorado to have an experience, but there's also people that can't afford to have a medical doctor card right away, but they need to have some relief. And so I just want to invite you guys to come out, even if you just come and sit for an hour or two. I promise, I won't tell nobody that you're in a pot shop if you're scared of that. But come on out and see these people face to face, okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Shawna. Move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a Consent Calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have three items. The approval of the minutes of the meeting of September 20th, 2017. Authorization for the city manager to sign the second purchase and sale agreement with Valley Land and Cattle LLC for up to an additional 350 acre feet of historical production from the confined aquifer up to a maximum of $525,000, and receive the August 2017 monthly financial reports and August 2017 monthly expenditure reports. Councilor Veale.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
My second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. We have two items for finance. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. I will do the staff presentation, but Judy will come up as well in case there are any questions. This is the first reading of the ordinance 31-2017, which is the annual appropriations for fiscal year 2018, otherwise known approving the budget. So this is the first reading. As clarified previously, if approved, council will have their second reading at the next meeting, which also includes a public hearing. We have had, I believe, three or four work sessions to review the budget. The budget does include the outside appropriations. It also includes the official CIP projects for the next five years. And the council communication had the highlights of probably what are the more significant changes that the public would be interested in. So just going quickly through that in regards to the general funds. We increased our revenues by conservative 3% growth. I think we've seen higher than that, but we still want to keep it conservative, and so we put 3%. We did put in a 0.5% cost of living adjustment. This is the first one that we've done since I've been here, and it's the first one that we've done since instituting the new pay plan. In 2014, city council gave staff direction to spend down a portion of the unassigned fund balance to use for capital projects. And so we are continuing with that, although we are reducing those somewhat a little bit in the aggressiveness of how quickly we spend that down. We did put in $250,000 in the non-departmental for architectural services for the downtown master plan. We hope to, oh, $100,000 of that is for the downtown plan, and then $150,000 of that is for the levy certification process. We did add an FTE to the city manager's office for public relations and project specialist. We also included a grant-funded part-time position in the city manager's office for the healthcare sector partnership. We included $2,000 in the IT budget so we could partner with the Boys and Girls Club for their tech academy. We also added two full-time officers. One of those positions is the agreement we have with TSJC, which will be fully funded as a school resource officer for our partner. And then the second one is an FTE that will be an officer. And so we are adding to our ranks in regards to addressing the needs of the community. We are transferring $50,000 from fire operations to begin saving up again for a fire truck. $100,000 was put in the Conservation Trust Fund for the Inspire Grant Match. We had actually had $100,000 in this year's budget, but since we didn't receive it through the first go-around, we're carrying that forward. $15,000 was maintained in our property abatement activities. This is the funding that allows us, for those properties that have presented as a nuisance and are not being addressed, we can address it and then do a tax lien, but this is the fund that we use in order to address that in a more timely manner. We have added a seasonal position in the public works, streets area, to make us more efficient and to be able to get more done during that small window of time that we're trying to do all the striping and other activities. $1,048,000 is in the budget for street improvements for 2018. I think that's a very important fact. $40,000 is budgeted for the conversion of streetlights to LED, and we are retaining the landscaping beautification line item of $15,000 to address prioritized projects, which we still need to do this year as well. We have not forgotten that. In the enterprise, we are increasing the utility rates as per the ordinance that council has already passed. The residential sewer rate will be by 8%, water is 6%, and sanitation is 10%. We are continuing to work on the water augmentation plan and making sure that we have the water rights lined up that we need for that. We are continuing or moving forward from the 2017 budget to 2018, the painting for Craft Water Tower. We were not able to get that accomplished in this year. We are putting $250,000 for a storm drain lift station at Victoria and Thomas. We are putting $500,000 to move the discharge location for the wastewater treatment plant, and $250,000 for repairs to the wastewater treatment plant as well. These are some of the items we spent work sessions on discussing some of the maintenance that had been delayed for the wastewater treatment plant. In regards to the recreation fund, the operation line items were increased appropriately to anticipate the ice rink multipurpose facility. We have added an FTE, assuming we are successful with the Inspire Grant application. If we are not successful, then we will not fill that FTE. And the FTE is an outdoor recreation specialist. And we have included $76,000 for repairs to the Recreation Center HVAC boiler system. We do do some of the other funds for accounting purposes, but those are the three major funds with the major items for each of them. If you were to look at the ordinance that is attached to the council communication, it does give you the totals for the spending from each of the funds. I can go over them, but just quickly, the general fund, total general government is a little bit over $3 million. Public safety is a little over $3 million. Public works is $2.8 million. Cemetery, Parks and Recreation is almost $700,000, for a general fund total of $9,814,967. The enterprise fund is about $5 million. CIP is $425,000. Cemetery endowment is $38,400. There are several just smaller funds. Conservation trust funds, $162,470. Employee benefit fund, $1.1 million. Community recreation fund is $1.8 million. Enterprise debt fund is $2.6, for a grand total budget of $21,725,994. And so that's essentially what the budget presentation is, and if there's any questions, Judy and I are available.
Thank you. Councilor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I probably should have asked this question during one of our work sessions, but tell me if I'm wrong, last year, didn't we approve $15,000 for beautification?
Yes, we did, and we still need to get that list to you. The Water Smarts Committee has met. They have some recommendations. I'm waiting on some costs for those recommendations, and so we still want to do something this year, and then we've kept that $15,000 for next year as well.
Okay. So I guess you answered part of my question. If, let's say, we don't spend that $15,000 for this past fiscal year, would we carry that over?
It would be council's prerogative if you want to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of our city manager or our finance director? Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. I feel like the communications we've received have been very clear. I feel like the conversations, we've been able to ask questions along the way. I know not everyone has been able to participate in those events, but I do feel like we've been able to get the information, and so I appreciate, I appreciate that a lot. And so that's one of the reasons I think while we're quiet up here is because we've heard this multiple times, and so I just kind of want people to hear that as well, that you guys have done a lot of work on this.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Grealish.
I didn't have any questions, and this is a first reading, so the next reading, the next one, it will be the public hearing where you can't come and ask questions for it. So with that, if nobody has any further questions, I'd make the motion to reapprove on first reading, ordinance number 31-217, establishing the 2018 budget on first reading and set it for a public hearing on October the, what is it?
18th.
18th at 7 o'clock or soon thereafter.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on.
Okay. So this, the next item is first reading ordinance number 32-2017, an ordinance establishing the employee pay plan for fiscal year 2018. This is the standard ordinance that we bring to you. The changes that we have made is we have shifted the entire plan by 0.5%. So your starting point, midpoint, and maximum have all shifted. The other thing is we've added any changes to the FTEs that we discussed with council during the budget process. So for example, the FTE that we've added to the city manager's office. We also added IT tech, too, so then we can have some of that promotional ability within our IT department. And I believe those are the only changes that we've made to the pay plan.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilor Veale?
If there's no questions, I move that we approve on first reading and set for public hearing on October 18th, 2017.
My second.
Did you want to finish your motion, Councilor Veale?
I think, I think I should.
I think we got it. Counselor, we're good? Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number 32-2017? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
We'll move on to Parks and Recreation. authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Trust for Public Lands and the San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition for Rio Grande Revitalization Planning Services. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an example of where we are surrounded by some really amazing partners that are very aggressive in seeking grants. And our partners with the Local Foods Coalition and the Farm Park have looked at how they can leverage the activity that's going on to then further enhance the river corridor. And they were successful in getting the Trust for Public Lands and the LoR Foundation, and to really do some public outreach on, yes, we heard through the comp plan that the river corridor is important, but what exactly do people want to see in regards to improvements along that corridor? And so the other part is there's just some strategies that we need to take a look at in regards to that, because we do not necessarily own the, all the easements along that. And what do we need to do from a communication perspective to secure those and those types of activities? They brought to our attention that the DOLA does offer planning grants and recommended that we apply to that, so it would lessen the amount that our partners needed to put towards that match. My impression is that it is being recommended that we receive it, and if we do, we need to enter into this relationship on a contractual basis. So up until this point, we've just been a partner, and we've been contributing and doing letters of support, but we are the ones that would need to apply to DOLA, and we would need to have then a contract relationship with the rest of the partners for this project. And so attached is a contract that they were going to sign prior to us needing to be one of the people signing on it. The city attorney does have some cleanup language that we're going to recommend to them, but the heart of it is, the scope is there, and what we're agreeing to, we would be passing the $25,000 on. We need to contribute $5,000. That will be coming from the $100,000 that's in the budget for the Inspire, which was for the development of the river corridors as well. So that is where those items were.
So that is where those items will come from. We can go over the contract, or I can answer any questions, but that's essentially, it's so we can bring a little bit of funding from DOLA to the table on an effort that was existing.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So this process is really just helping them get a grant. We're kind of a pass-through, and there's no real cost to the city other than our time that we would have already been spending in the coalition.
We would have already been doing the time. We do, though, in order to get the grant, DOLA needs us to have some skin in the game, and so that's the $5,000.
And that is already from the $100,000? That's not a double?
Now, so if we get the full Inspire grant that we've asked for, that $100,000 is going to be dedicated to that. I'm not sure we can carry that over, so we look at $5,000 from the fund balance, but we really don't think we're going to get, we think we're going to be at 75% or 50% of the request, which then we will have plenty.
And $5,000 is not, I'm not concerned about $5,000. I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Heather said and how awesome this could be for us, and doing a lot of legwork, especially for those easements and the people who own property on the river corridor net. They'll be doing the work and talking to the people and stuff like that, so just kudos to McDaniel, the Local Foods Coalition, and Julie Mordecai and her team.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Grealy?
Tell me again who the partners are in this that are put together?
Well, and they cross all over. So Julie Mordecai-
The ones I'm reading here are just a small amount.
Okay, so Trust for, so it began with Trust for Public Land and the LOR Foundation working together. Those two entities decided they kind of wanted to split ways, but they didn't want to leave the people they had been talking to hanging. So the LOR committed to still give the $100,000, and they are okay if we continue to work with the Trust for Public Lands. The Trust for Public Land is committing their expertise, their knowledge, and additional resources to the project. And then the ones who actually began these discussions with the LOR Foundation is our local foods coalition and the Farm Park, so Julie Mordecai, Liza, all of them.
I also see that Alamosa County is involved in it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's a good catch. Yes.
That's great.
Rachel Byrd, I believe, Rachel has been at a lot of the meetings and providing a lot of technical expertise for planning purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, I'm really happy and pleased to see that the city is collaborating and working with these organizations to make a dream and a plan to go and to put it into place to where we can make it a reality in the future. So thank you for your efforts, and I would like to thank everyone who's a participant in this process, because this is going to make our river corridor more attractable as well as help us come up with the plans that we need to implement strategies to make it beneficial to everybody in the community. So thank you.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Then I move that we authorize the city manager to sign a contract for services with TPL and the Local Foods Coalition for Rio Grande Revitalization Planning Services.
A second. I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on the authorization of the city manager to sign the contract? Seeing none, start voting, please. I need one. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to city manager legal. Tonight, we have a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 29-2017, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of medical and retail marijuana stores through May the 1st, 2018. City manager or Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading on this, and this is, would establish a temporary moratorium if the two ballot items receive enough votes to pass in November. As a reminder, there is an item before voters related to the sale of medical marijuana and a separate item related to the sale of recreation or retail marijuana. If those should pass, staff feels that it's important to allow council time to determine what type of regulations, zoning requirements, those types of items, and to be able to be diligent about those discussions and the public outreach. I think it's something that council very much wants to make sure that there is a public outreach portion of that when they are shaping these types of policies. And so the moratorium would only go into effect if those two items or one of those items passes in November. As you know, right now, they are prohibited, so there's no need for a moratorium right now. The moratorium does allow, if it goes into effect, for people to submit an application in case council decides to limit the number of establishments, so people would still be able to submit, and we would collect them in order and keep track of that. The moratorium would extend to May 1st, 2018, and I think council may have been hearing that that seems like a long time from the public and those types of things. And we just want to make sure that we're clear that if we move through this process quickly and we're able to have the public process and council's able to weigh some of the different items and come up with sound policy, we can always end the moratorium earlier than May 1st. So just because we have May 1st in there does not mean that that's not something we can end sooner than that time. And with that, I'll turn it over to council if you want to conduct the public hearing or ask any questions.
Absolutely. Okay, and so with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 29-2017. Anyone in the audience willing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium. Identify yourself and your address if you wish, please. Please come to the podium. Thank you.
First off, I want to thank you guys. This is my first time doing this. I'm Diana Hall. I live in Blanca, and I am the president of the Cannapower Foundation. I came here from Oklahoma, and on the advice of my doctor, I've suffered two heart failures, so that's kind of how it came about. And I just want to kind of introduce myself to y'all and let you see kind of what my face is. We're not, I guess, I know y'all's concerned, because when my doctor said, "Go to Colorado unless you want to live off Valium the rest of your life," I said, "Well, I don't smoke that stuff." You know, because I was scared. I didn't know, you know, what to expect, but since I've gotten my medical stuff under control and been able to see doctors that understood that, it's not, of course, you didn't make anything a drug. I grew up in an alcoholic household, and that scared the heck out of me, so I don't drink. But I just kind of wanted to say thank you guys for at least opening up to listen, because there's a lot of people in this world that don't, they're just not willing to listen. And I'm willing to listen to what you guys say, because I was sitting right where you were. I was a workaholic all my life, had two heart failures, went down, I ran doggy daycares, and before that, I was a fire alarm planner. So that's what I did, and I didn't expect to have Taco Subo, and it was a stress-related thing. So I have a lot of pain and things like that, but again, it wasn't something that I just did all my life and decided, I'd just say, "Let me go to Colorado," because that's what's happened a lot of times, is people do come here. But I was sitting here listening to a lot of the nice citizens talk about, you know, some of the things that you guys are needing, like playground equipment, and I look at some of the other towns, and I'm like, man, if y'all can hope that people will be responsible like us. I went in one of the dispensaries to get my medicine, and there was a lady in there with oxygen on. So sometimes I eat it, the smoking it, I can't do, because I have CPD, so I'm not into that. But just, this is, I just want you guys to know, this is kind of the face of some of us out there. We're wanting to also get to know you guys, because I was one of you guys. I was very active in my city in Richardson, Texas. Voted All Truce Woman of the Year before I went down with, right after I went down with heart failure. Then I had to go back with a cane and say, "Thank you for the thing, but I'm not able to work here anymore." So I'm not going to take more of you guys' time, because I know three minutes, to me, it seems like forever. But I want to thank you guys for, you know, at least allowing me to come up here and say, "Hey, I'm an old lady," and that's why I started Cannapower. My sister died with cancer, just a horrible death. And I've seen three people walk now that didn't have a chance of living because of the Rick Simpson's oil deal, and I didn't know about any of that, but I guess I'm kind of learning. So thank you, guys. I'm going to let y'all carry on with your meeting, and I appreciate your time. Bye.
Thank you, Diane.
Mayor, if I may make a comment, this clock right here is running. You're not regulated for three minutes in a public hearing. I guess he's just running it just to run it, I guess. But we're not, a public hearing is you take your time, and if it takes whatever time you need, that's the time it should be, not three minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Grealy.
That's entirely correct, Counselor. I'm running it just because I think we don't, I'm not concerned about an overabundance of overlapping comments, but often at public hearings, we will get duplicative comments, and they run later than they need to. So this is just to advise the speaker of how long they've been speaking for their own use.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Is anyone else in the audience willing to speak for or against? Please approach podium.
I'm David Broyles, and I do support the moratorium, and I thank the city council for being, having the foresight to put this moratorium on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broyles.
Hi, I'm Chloe Everhard again. So I wanted to talk about one or two logical fallacies that I hear and read about specifically involving the moratorium ordinance and its effects on medical marijuana patients. One is the slippery slope fallacy. I think some people are still influenced by Reagan era propaganda that marijuana is a gateway drug. I see marijuana as an exit drug. Johann Hari, author of Chasing the Scream, did extensive research that shows addiction is actually a disease of lack of connection to one's community. Medical marijuana helps people with pain avoid opiate addiction by giving them an alternative that hasn't directly caused a death. Medical marijuana patients who can't drive safely because of their disabilities, which sometimes include seizures, various types of paralysis, crush and burn injuries, cancer, chemo, head injuries, PTSD, failure to thrive, and other conditions as varied as people's pain. So the sooner people can safely walk to get their medicine, the safer, healthier, and better exercised everyone will be. I think it might be an American With Disabilities Act issue that medical marijuana patients who can't drive are being forced to travel 12 miles to the nearest dispensary. With winter coming, the moratorium puts the most vulnerable adults at further risk of frostbite. Please avoid the personal incredulity fallacy and be grateful if you've never experienced the sort of pain that would make you seek and obviously qualify for medical marijuana and unable to safely drive.
Thank you.
Well, council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And I started working with economic development issues with the city council 30 years ago. Probably the only one sitting up here is Charlie Grealy, who's been around that long, with Michael Hackett, city manager. And over those years, I've had the opportunity to be involved in a lot of economic development projects. I was on the committee that put the rec center together and got a belt. Served on Alamosa Chamber Development Corporation for many years, and had the opportunity to put the marketing district together, put a marketing tax together, purchased the depot building, bring in a Colorado Welcome Center. And so economic development has been important to me over the years, and I've done a lot of work with city council over the years in doing that. I talked to a gentleman from Antonino about three weeks ago, Steve Atencio, a business owner. He says, "Please tell the people of Alamosa, do not let marijuana into their town. It has ruined business in Antonino." He says, "If you have any questions, call him." Definitely, I do not want to see all of the efforts that I've expended over the years in city council and everybody else go backwards. We need to move forward. Allowing dispensaries into Alamosa is going to move us backwards economically. And it's not necessary. It's available. We don't need it in Alamosa, and I certainly support the moratorium, and definitely against any dispensaries ever in Alamosa. There's been too many people, too much effort and time to get this community to where it is today, to move us backward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I mean, Terry? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanna Hobbs. I live here at Alamosa County. I'm asking you all to actually shorten the moratorium. I think it's unfair that other businesses are allowed to come in with an application that sells a product that is much more dangerous and lethal, whether it be cheeseburgers or alcohol, and they're allowed to operate within normal planning and zoning laws that apply to every other business. The only ones that have any restrictions are alcohol stores and bars, things of that nature. Cannabis, of course, was legalized in Colorado in 2012, was approved by voters here in Alamosa County. It was then lumped together in a question that was all encompassing, saying, "Shall we allow all retail establishments to come to Alamosa County?" It was introduced the following year, when there really wasn't any model set up. It was a low voter turnout. It was non-election year, things of that nature, so there hasn't been a vote on it since. It failed slightly. The city then decided not to even ask voters whether or not to allow shops. So we had to go through this entire process that you guys have a clue, because maybe you've been involved in those processes before, but where we had to go out and get voters that are registered here in the city to, first of all, agree to speak to us as we're coming up to their property, as we're invading their personal space while they're walking around Summerfest, those things. Can we just speak to you a moment? So for people to be able to stop and listen, and then it turned into a shared story, a common interest, an acknowledgement of its benefits, any kind of seed that was planted, we felt like it was some sort of a small victory, if you will. Okay? There's a lot of people here that believe it's as bad or worse than alcohol. They have no problems with there being 10 bars up and down Main Street and pubs and breweries, even a festival out in the city park that got rained out. They have been glorifying this kind of thing for many years, or at least ignoring it, walking by it. And now, all of a sudden, that one person, which doesn't really have any authority in Alamosa, gives an opinion of his own, because he's not a believer, he's not a user, he doesn't participate in that. And then that's supposed to be the nail in the coffin for some people's beliefs, and I think that's something that we all need to address, that just because somebody has an opinion that's different than ours, doesn't mean we have to get them to agree, or that we have to flip our opinion and agree with them. It just means that there's other people out there that are going to patronize these places and other people that will not. I don't necessarily go to liquor stores or bars or, you know, things of that nature, but I go to a cannabis shop every day. I use cannabis every day. It helps to regulate my mood. It helps to keep me from being stressed out. There's lots of benefits for my neuropathy and diabetes that it helps with. So there's reasons why people don't need to continue waiting if they don't have to, and if they have signed these papers and they have talked to, you know, volunteers and people, they should be able to have a say, and it should be recognized, and you should be prepared for that. And you should be able to say, "Okay." And you should be able to say, okay, here's what you asked for. And if it's not something that you believe in or necessarily want, that's fine, but you have a job to do as representatives to make decisions that hopefully will, you know, not cause chaos, but also have a common sense pragmatic approach. I think six months is way too long, especially that you're putting us in the same category as people that are trying to open a consumption club when there's yet no place to buy it. Having people wait that long, even if there's an application process before, and even if you decide to shorten that moratorium before, it's still, it's almost like a, well, maybe we'll shorten it. Maybe, you know, if they decide, if they get around to it. No, there needs to be something concrete in place that you're willing to commit to and abide by and get meetings held and get rules copied and past to fit Alamosa's needs and make it fair to where it's not ignoring Amendment 64 that says, regulate the sale of cannabis like alcohol. That means be in the same places that they're allowed. It doesn't mean one next to everyone in Alamosa. It means if you allow a bar on Main Street, you can't exclude a cannabis shop where there's not even any onsite consumption and where there is strict protocol against underage sale. Business owners that are going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on equipment, merchandise, application fees, insurance, lawyers, all of these things, they are not going to let their employees risk that investment in order to sell an eighth to a 20-year-old. It's just not going to happen. Yes, people will have to be more responsible with their own purchases, but that is on them. There are so many people that buy beer for these college students, it's unreal, and this is not putting anyone in peril, as alcohol often does. We've got to be able to say, okay, there's, there's a path. Here's the ordinances. Here's the planning and zoning. Almost as soon as it passes, I wish we could have the application process begin on January 1 and have stores open by March 1 and have cannabis clubs applications available by May 1 to give people a safe place to go and consume and to give legitimate business owners another outlet that may be controversial to some, but you have to look at where that controversy comes from. Sometimes it's social conditioning, sometimes it's religious conditioning, and sometimes it's just a plain old bad experience or linking one thing to another when it doesn't really have anything to do with it, saying that it's the gateway drug. That is the oldest canned response. I'm so tired of hearing it. Immediately makes my eye twitch. You have no idea how many people are getting off of pharmaceutical drugs, off of heroin, off of alcohol by substituting it with less harmful drug that they can actually grow in their own garden. And yes, I use the term drug only because that's how everybody sees it and how everybody can identify it, but really and truly, it is an herb. And people have been nullifying herbologists and natural medicine doctors for many years. It's nothing new. This is just a molecule that people are fighting over of having safe access to for people. When I've got people that have to drive 40 miles, you think living in Alamosa City is the only place where people come from? No. They come from as far as South Fork, from as far as Fort Garland because they don't like the cannabis shops there. And when I tell them that they can shop at our other two recreational stores, they're glad because that means more variety. They get to, you know, go and find something that actually works perfect for them if I don't carry it or if they're at that end of the valley and need medicine. So I just think it's something that you're not considering, that all of these people that are coming through here are not just locals, so many tourists, I'm telling you. And I wish I had an actual account for you, but I would be lying. But so many people, hundreds of people, let me put it that way, that I'm comfortable with saying. I had to send 50 miles away, either direction, daily, multiple times a day, phone calls. Are you recreational? No, we're medical only. And recently, I've gotten to the point where I'm like, if you'd like to call our county commissioners or city council members, I'll give you their phone number because it's becoming ridiculous. And if you wait until May 1 to even let businesses open up, you're missing an entire growing season and harvest to where people can have product available for the tourist season. You'll miss an entire year's worth of tax revenue. And if, you know, one thing that I'm trying to help promote is the tax revenue part of it, vote yes on it. We're getting, I'm getting ahead of myself. So there's going to be a way that you guys are just going to be sending the same message to people. We don't have it here. We don't want it here. And they're saying, why? It's legal in Colorado. It helps people. I need to try it for this. I can't go get a medical card. I don't live here. Do I have to drive all the way down there? Yes, you do. And it's just time for it to stop. It's a business like any other business. In fact, it's safer than most businesses only because of the amount of scrutiny, the amount of scrutiny that not only business owners have to go through, they have to provide so much financial information, they have to be completely transparent. Your workers, they have to go through that entire process. We've talked about that before in the past. It's a, it's a headache in and of itself. And right now, I have about a dozen applications of people that need jobs, but there's no shops to work in them. And I do tell them, you know, we've got temporary trimming jobs, you know, occasionally we might have a bud tender quit, but generally, workers are very happy in their positions. They found something that they love, they know about, and they want to share their information with people who are on that same level. If you don't want to use it, if you have so many reservations, well, then by God, live your life. Eat your spinach, drink your Pepsi, and don't worry about marijuana. But don't prohibit people that have good, clean money, that want to open businesses, that provide a good and a service to people that are oftentimes sick, hurting, suffering, sad, depressed, lonely. And all of these things are being addressed with a conversation and an herb or a product thereof. And then they're, they'll abide by other people who have opposite beliefs about it. And it's just totally unfair, and it's something that really needs to be called out. But I really want to just extend a thank you for allowing us to be able to have a word in it. I know that you guys are going to do what you all think is best, and that's fine. It's totally on you all. But these are my thoughts, opinions, and words. And I, I talk with business owners and I talk to people that are in this industry. So I want to be able to, you know, give them a voice and let you guys know that they're out there, they want to have a legitimate business, they want to work jobs and get off of Medicaid and food stamps and provide a good living income for their family. But further delaying it is only appeasing people who aren't willing to work, people who aren't willing to have the conversations, and people who aren't willing to take the afternoon to copy and paste from other cities that have allowed med, allowed rec. And, you know, being able to see the level of knowledge of how the industry works is sometimes surprising, but I also understand that's not your job to know that a medical grow is automatic with a medical shop. And there are some things that you can't ordinance out, that you can try and prohibit, but they're able to be challenged because state law is in effect. And so we have to be able to recognize that sometimes our personal biases and our personal opinions and the words that other people say do have an impact on how we vote, how we believe, and how we operate. And then we need to look at those closer. So I hope you guys have always followed up and researched after questions that you have and, you know, ordinances that are already out there. An afternoon would take care of it. I have worked in bureaucratic situations before, and it is mind-numbing sometimes at the amount of circular talk. And what do we do? What do we do? Who do we talk to? And it really just comes down to people being willing to say, okay, cut the crap, and let's find out how to make this work for business owners and make it fair for voters. All this, all of this is just still so...
Shanna, thank you very much.
So troubling.
I know we have other folks that are willing to...
Okay. Well, then I'll go sit down. You know, I could ramble on forever, so I appreciate your...
I appreciate, we appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Your politeness there. You'll have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone?
I'm Melanie Garcia. I read the other day in the paper, an article regarding Doug Robinson spoke on the promise of tax dollars for schools and roads from the marijuana has not played out in other communities. But I'm wondering, whose fault is that? As a dispensary owner or whatever, they are supposed to be paying taxes to the city employ, or to the city. And if it's not being dispersed into where it's supposed to be going as far as the schools or other places, whose fault is that? It's not the taxpayer who isn't paying their taxes, but I think it's the people who are responsible for distributing that money where it's supposed to be going. So as far as that, I think, you know, that's my question on that. Second, what is a city, if legalization is allowed, what does a city want to see from the dispensaries? Where's that revenue going to be going? What, what do they want to see in the community? We hear it's going to bring everything down, but you haven't allowed anybody a chance to contribute back into the community, not in just into our pockets, but back to our children, back to our people in this community. We hear that, talking about taxes, we hear there's going to be an increase in our utility bills, improvement to our roads, improvement to everything. What's going on on the south side? Besides, the roads are all broken, busted down. People are told, you know, there's a homeless shelter there. There's a lot of heroin, meth, everything going on over there. They've opened up a methadone clinic and everything there, but where's the assistance going to these people, the residents? You know, it's not just the lower class people living on the south side. There's a lot of elderly. I have a home there. A lot of the revenue in the state of Colorado has increased from 76 million to over 200 million from 2014 to 2016. There's a two-year term of that large increase. A lot of the money spent in Colorado, most of the money has gone to schools. The chunks have gone to drug prevention and treatment programs and regulating the marijuana industry. So it's still being put back into more research and everything on it. I do think that dispensaries should be allowed and made a, given a chance to, to give back to the community and see where this money can go here. And then I do have another question. On the taxation question that's going to be put on our November ballot, so my question is, is this piece I printed out, it says, what the actual ballot language for the retail recreational marijuana question. Shall the taxes of the city of Alamosa be increased by $300,000? And then it says, I guess it hits legal, but in the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018, by such amounts and are raised annually, therefore by imposing an additional tax of 5% on the sale of retail marijuana and marijuana products. So you're going to be increasing this, the tax $300,000 or so, and then on a product that's not even been approved or anything? Is that, no? So it won't be an increase in taxes to the people if they vote yes or no on it? Can you explain that?
No. The, the public hearing is for making comments to Counsel. If you have questions, the appropriate place to get those addressed is to ask staff. So you could ask the City Manager or me those questions, not during a council meeting or after the council meeting would be fine.
Oh, regarding the tax increase?
Correct, but not, not during the public hearing, not for your comments.
Okay. Well, that was my question regarding that $300,000 increase in taxes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay. Those are my questions or statements.
Very good.
Thank you.
It's, it's scary speaking up here in front of City Council about cannabis. I'm, I'm so glad it's going for a vote. I'm really sad that I can't vote. No one, no one's addressed that issue, so I guess someday I'll have time to do a petition. But I own the green spot. My husband and I and the bank, my kids, and we work pretty damn hard. And I have, I have no doubt that I would be out of business without cannabis growers. I'm thankful every day. They're good people. I hope I don't lose the support of my regular customers because it's all actually about gardening. I think the city owes it to anyone that wants to do a dispensary. I mean, I don't, I don't even know what's coming up for a vote because, again, I can't vote. But you owe it to the people who have worked so hard to make this a priority. If the vote passes, and I have, I don't, I don't have a good feel for what's going to happen, but if it passes, you owe them and everybody a priority that if you can shorten the moratorium, you should. These questions have been before City Council since cannabis became legal. You know, they've been at your CML conferences, you've talked to other cities, other city councillors, and it's kind of one of those things, I look at statistics. And I don't care what kind of statistics you're throwing out there, what anyone is throwing out there. You can throw one out and twist it and tweak it and make it say what you want to say. And I can take those same statistics and say, oh, yeah, but, but this person said, and I happened to talk to an owner of a dispensary in, in Gunnison today. Successful beyond all dreams. They worked hard and they got, I think they got, what did he say? Outstanding Business of the Year in Gunnison? You know, you don't do that, just, you just don't do that if you don't have a good business. And sure, there's, I'm sure there's bad dispensaries and there's bad garden centers and there's bad liquor stores and there's bad grocery stores, but people, if it goes for a vote and it passes, people deserve to go into business. And I guess I, I too would wonder, and, and Teri and I have all the respect in the world for you and what you've done in the community. I've also done a lot in the community since 1973, when I moved here. I've done a lot. I haven't done the pay-to-play boards, but I have done a lot. And when I look at real estate value, and when I had a friend of mine come into the store a couple of weeks ago who has a home two, three, two or three blocks south of me, and I said, well, are you selling? You've moved. And she's like, no. The value of my house, she says, all I want for it is 189,000, and it's a nice house in, in a cul-de-sac on Princess, I think Princess Anne Court or whatever. And the real estate agent said, you're in the wrong neighborhood. You're too close to the shelter. So what? Do we take the shelter and get rid of it because it's bringing down those property values? I've never seen anyone on, on City Council or on county commissioners or even, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, on the La Puente Board of Directors, live right by the shelter. You know, so when we talk real estate values, let's, let's compare them all. I don't, I don't like what's happening in my neighborhood if a dispensary came in or someplace else. I would expect them to be clean. I would expect them to keep their weeds picked up. I would expect them to have flower planters and benches out front, and I would expect them to be responsible. I would expect the city to hold them to task and our police force to hold them to task. I know, I know growers out east of town where the sheriff's department gladly goes out and inspects. inspects. They pretty near ask for an inspection. "Please come and tell me I'm doing it right. Please check my numbers. Please check this." These are good people. So again, I, it's time, whether, and let's all wait and see when it passes or if it doesn't pass in November, but expediency should be the goal if it passes. We've had enough time to figure it out, in my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this issue?
My name's Justin Madrid. A lot of you guys know me on the city council. I live on the south side of the tracks is where she says. Ruth, Mike actually lives on the south side on it. Okay, well, earlier you said you didn't know anybody. He does. Also, I think opening a dispensary is a positive deal. It's going to help out the community in a lot of ways. No offense to you, Terry, because you're an excellent person on it, but I've sat back there, listened to a lot of people talk. Opening a dispensary, there's so much things you can do with schools, scholarships for kids, you can fix roads, you can do a lot of stuff that a lot of people ain't looking forward to, especially on the south side. A lot of the money situation right now is going up towards the hospital area with the roads being fixed up in that area and everything. I was on H Street yesterday, and there's trees that are falling down or have been cut on the sidewalk. Been there for over a week, and I haven't seen the city do anything about that. And I've seen city guys go up and down that road every day on it. But like I said, you know what? There's a lot of things that the dispensaries will help out, taking care of a lot of stuff like that. And there's just numerous things that people ain't looking forward to. I don't smoke. I don't drink, but you know what? I am for it on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this issue? Please approach the podium. I see no one. I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 29-2017 and bring it to council for further discussion or a decision. Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone who was able to come up and speak with us today, and I do hope you stay and ask the staff to get your questions answered. The thing that I said the last time we had this conversation, and I still believe it about the moratorium, is with our new zoning process and the things that we are doing and marijuana currently not being legal within the city limits, I feel that the marijuana moratorium makes a lot of sense. I also agree, though, as we've all spoken about, if we can get the zoning done sooner and understand where we're going to do it, we absolutely need to do that, and it should be a priority. I think the six months gives us a room, but it shouldn't be what we're striving for. It should be, that's the last amount it should take us, should this pass. But I do agree with the moratorium, and I think we would be not making a good decision if we lowered the moratorium to be less than that unless we're ready. And I would just challenge council to be ready to have these hard conversations and to make these decisions should it pass in November.
Councilor Stefano.
I echo what Ms. Daniels just said, too. I believe that the moratorium should be the way it is right now. I don't think we should change it in November. If the people decide that they want this marijuana retail places in their town, then that's going to be up to the voters. That's why we're putting it on the ballot, so the people can have their say. This is what this country's about, democracy. I believe that, you know, every time that I speak out on this issue, I get trashed on Facebook because of my stand, and I still feel that a lot of the people have lost their spine. They don't stand up what they believe in anymore. Everything's okay. If you want marijuana, what's next? Are we going to grow poppies in Alamosa, too? Open poppy fields and stuff like that? I just don't realize where this is going. So if I lose my election in November because of this, it's really sad because somebody speaks out for, Ms. Hobbs, you speak out the way you want to speak your opinion, and I'm speaking my opinion, and you say that it's not a gateway. There's a lot of evidence that does lead to kids smoking pot and go on to something So I believe that this moratorium should stand.
Thank you. Councilor Hansley.
So I think you said it really well, Councilor Daniel. I also agree that if this does pass, what this does is allows us the time. This is something that is new. It's hard to plan ahead till it's passed, and there'd be a lot of time spent. So I agree that if this is something that the voters choose to pass, that we need to work hard amongst ourselves to try to make this a priority and try to get then, we've listened to the voters, and then trying to act as fast as we can. It allows us that leeway, but I do think as a group that we do need to then work hard because I don't think we should be taking the time now to do it till it does, if it does pass, but then we need to jump in there and start working once, if it does, so.
Thank you. Councilor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, I'm wondering if you could please answer that question about the taxes for my own benefit?
Sure. The ballot question makes clear, or as clear as legal constraints involving ballot questions can allow it to be made. The taxes do not become imposed unless the ballot issues concerning establishing, one or more of them concerning establishing marijuana stores pass. So unless there are marijuana stores that become allowed, there's no tax that gets imposed. If marijuana stores are approved by the voters, then, as we've discussed, during the moratorium period, council will come up with the appropriate rules and regulations governing such stores and integrate those into the land use code. And so while there will be taxes that are in effect, practically, there won't be any taxes assessed until a store actually opens its doors and sells something upon which the tax would then accrue. But if the vote is no on both of those legalization issues, then there's no tax.
And again, the tax is only on retail, not medical.
Correct. And if this does pass and the tax question passes, can we only collect $300,000 worth of taxes in that first year?
That's correct.
Okay. I hope that answers your question.
If you have any further questions, ma'am, you're going to have to ask staff. That was, is that all you have, Councilor Vehill?
Yeah, so I'd just like to, a couple of comments. I do agree with Councilor Daniel and Ms. Hansley, but I, there were some comments made earlier that, man, this has been in place since 2012. I mean, there's a lot of evidence, there's a lot of facts, there's a lot of case studies that we could have been researching, looking at, to implement and talk about as soon as, if this does pass. However, I do, I do agree with you, and we've set up here, and we've heard stories from the public and from our own police chief that, of towns like Trinidad and towns like Pub, and Pueblo West where they didn't do, their own local governments didn't do what they were supposed to, to make, not make this crazy and have 18 shops and not have the rules in place so it could be successful. So I think we should, like you said, Ms. Hobbs, do common sense, pragmatic approaches to this, yet if we can get the ball rolling and get this done within six months or sooner, I would appreciate that because whether we like it or not, if this passes, we have to get, we have to get going. So, thank you.
Councilor Vehill.
I too would like to thank everybody that's come here to speak for and against it. You know, this is, this is how you're supposed to do it, you know, and as Mr. Stefano says, this is still a democracy, and however the people want, whatever direction they want to go, that's what we will follow. And with that, Mayor, I want to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 29, 2017, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of medical and retail marijuana stores through May 1, 2018, or sooner.
I second. I've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I had a.
Councilor Coleman?
Yeah, I had a brief comment. I don't think my mic was able to be activated, Councilman Vehill, it's okay. But in regards to the moratorium, I think at this time, I want the people to know that with the limited information we have at this time, this is what we have to do because anything, right now, until the voters actually vote for or against it, there's not much we can do. Once that occurs, then anything that's worth doing is worth doing right. If we don't do it right, we're going to spend a lot more time and resources trying to do something over. So that's why council needs an opportunity to look at all areas of this issue and make the right decision for everyone involved. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And so I'll follow that up, Councilor Coleman. You know, home rural municipalities like ours have a duty to analyze and positively reflect on cannabis through effective governance. A moratorium is that vehicle in responsible representation and due diligence. And not only does that fall on us, it falls on staff. So we want to do our due diligence to make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. And so with that, we'll go ahead and start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Let me get back over here to my screen, and we are at committee reports. Who has a committee report? Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. The tree board was originally scheduled to meet today, but they have postponed their meeting till the 11th, so I will have a better update on our next council meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Hansley.
So a couple of things. First of all, from the marketing board, I'm sure people read the paper, Jamie has resigned from the marketing board. So I believe some decisions will be made at the next meeting, so I will let everybody know from that. And then also with the golf board, Rybex has made the decision to close down, and so it looks like it'll be their last week. They're going to finish up a few parties. So again, when we know more about that, I'll be able to pass along on that as well.
Thank you. Councilor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three reports, so please bear with me. I went to a library board meeting last Wednesday, and nothing too special going on. Businesses going day by day. Their state, they still remain very busy, and a few of their numbers as far as circulations and children being there, stuff like that, are up, so that's good. The Rio Grande Farm Park, they had a very successful soray on September 9th. If any of you all went, they told me to tell you thank you for showing up. Everything is done at the park because of the cold weather now, so. And a really cool thing that they're doing now is they received a grant, and they're going to use that money from the grant to, they hired a local architect to start planning some of the buildings that they want to build, they want to put on there, like a conference hall, a little farmhouse thing and stuff like that. So they're just getting the blueprints ready, and that's going to take about a year to get done. But he's a gentleman out of Crestone who has designed many homes up there, so it's a really top-notch guy. Then I went to the Alamosa school board meeting on Monday, and the highlight out of that meeting is they keep on trying to get better across the board. And as far as their teaching is concerned, their high school and their elementary are hitting their marks. Middle school needs some work, and they're addressing that. Also, they're starting to talk about maybe reducing their number of board from seven to five. There's a lot of discussions that have to go along with that, but it seems that a lot of school districts in the state are five-member boards and not seven. Alamosa School Board is one of the outliers. And I guess a thing I'd like to ask you guys is, the library board and the Rio Grande Farm Park meet on the same day at the same time every three months. So there's one meeting that, and Heather can attest, I was only there at the library board meeting for about 25 minutes, and I went down to the Rio Grande Farm Park meeting. So if anybody would like to maybe help me out on that day, that'd be great. It's a Tuesday night, and the Rio Grande Farm Park meets every month. The library board meets every two months.
On which Tuesday?
The fourth Tuesday of the month.
At 5:30.
At 5:30.
I could do that.
The library board?
The fourth Tuesday, yeah, because I, since I had to get off the rec board, I feel like I could definitely assist in a different way.
So Councilor Vehill, are you looking to maybe be the alternate and Councilor Daniel be the appointee? Okay.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Hansley.
Can I just, was there an alternate already set for you or not?
There was, but I can't recall who it is.
Because I'm wondering if we should follow to make sure nobody's feeling, I mean, I'm just asking.
I don't have that information.
I can, I can try to take a quick look at that real fast if you guys want to talk about something else, and we come back to that.
Thank you. The Housing Authority continues to make progress with replacement of windows and doors at this point in time, and so that's the highlight out there. They are pretty close to capacity in filling their units, and eventually they plan to install an irrigation system, I believe on Oliver and Thomas as well. We'll have to see how that goes. I'll keep you informed on that. I will be attending the policy committee meeting middle of this month. I think I sent an email to each and every one of you specific to the topics that will be covered at that policy committee meeting. If you have any input, please let me know. Email me as to what you feel or what you think might be improved and that kind of thing. I'd appreciate that kind of feedback, as well as if staff has some ideas or concerns about any of the issues that, did you get that already? Not yet. I think, I don't know if you got that as well. Holly, did you get that or no? You did. Would you make sure that our city manager gets that as well as our counselor? Thank you very much.
To circle back on the, I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead.
To circle back on the library board, the alternate was Councilor Stefano was the listed alternate.
Do you, would you rather, since you were the alternate on the library board, would you rather be the appointee?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
I'd accept it.
Okay, if that's what you want.
Very good. Thank you.
And then should we place Christina as the alternate then? Okay.
If the primary can't make it, it would be advisable to just have, you know, call them and visit with them and say they're not going to be attending, and then that way the alternate can attend in their place. Thank you. Okay. Any other committee reports? We'll move on to staff announcements. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a few items coming up. October 16th is Meet the Candidates Forum. October 25th, we have a work session, work session scheduled for temporary outdoor sales, licensing, and zoning. We are going to be adding two work sessions. I am looking at adding a work session for next week, Wednesday, the 11th. That would be to discuss the lead program. That would be to discuss the lead program and application that, that we're looking at putting together. The second, and just so you know why I'm trying to cram that in, we have to turn that in by the end of the month. So it's something that we, we have a limited time to get that before you for, for discussion. The other work session that I am going to discuss with John Attencio is to have a joint golf board work session on Wednesday, November 1st. So I'm gonna check with him to see if that works for enough of their board and have a, have a joint meeting. Do we need to decide if, if they want to request that the city operates it, or if they want to adopt a new contract that has changes in it that, that are in line with council's priorities? And so that needs to be decided before the end of the year, and that's why we need to set that meeting up. Also, we, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Gala on Saturday night. They had a great crowd. Some of our local artists from the downtown art were also featured, so it was exciting to see them, especially Amias, who's, I believe, 13, was very popular with some of his pieces, and it was really a neat event, and I think it was a great community representation there. We are gonna look at installing some panic buttons in the library, our front counters here, and at the rec center. This is just something a lot of communities do. We can sometimes get irate customers, we sometimes get people that could set off some red flags for our staff, especially for the rec center and library. They are open during hours beyond the traditional eight to five, and sometimes can feel a little alone. So this is something we hope we never have to use, but we'll make sure that we have them. It's a very minimal investment, less than 5,000 total, and we'll make sure we do appropriate training as well. We also have a lean-in lunch coming up Thursday, October 12th, where our council member Hensley is the guest speaker for that. And then Habitat Dinner has been publicized for Friday, October 13th. And with that, we already have the chief ready to give an update on e-ticketing.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to give you an update on our e-citations program. If you recall, last year, we were successful in getting a C.D.O.C. grant to help fund this project. With the help of the IT and staff and the police department, we've been successful in receiving training last week, and our officers will begin using the e-citations. Some of them that have been trained are starting to use them. We're working through some small glitches, electronics, that's what we expect, programming and everything else, so we're working through those, but our officers are out there starting to use these citations, which hopefully will improve officer safety, accuracy, citizen safety, and efficiency overall. So they've already experienced just one day of training, reducing tickets down to about six minutes per officer on an average, so 10, 15-minute ticket is, the efficiency has already been improved on day one. So I just wanted to give you an update on that program. It's been about a year and a half coming, so long process.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, could you explain to us and walk us through the process with the e-tickets and how it makes it different and better for the officers compared to the old way they were doing it?
Sure. So the old way, they would handwrite a ticket. We're kinda like doctors, we have bad handwriting, so a lot of errors on tickets where you can't read a specific letter, VIN numbers, O's and zeros are a little different and so forth. So the e-citation is, is about the size of your cellphone. They're ruggedized, so if you drop them, they're not gonna break. The officers would walk up with the device in their hand or in their pocket, wherever they feel safe to. Each officer's a little different as far as the procedures that follow. But they can scan a driver's license immediately, that'll import the data. The vehicle information, we can scan the VIN plate if it has a barcode on it. If not, we can, inside the door, there's a barcode that we can scan, so it'd import that data as well. I've also been told that, I've been working with the state, and they're hopeful to put a barcode on the back of the actual papal registration by August of next year, so that's more efficient by importing the data, there's no manual entry, so reduction of errors there. The officers will go back through the car like they usually did, but they will print a ticket, and then the offender, if they get a ticket, they can get a warning, but it's printed and it's like a cash register receipt. So we've been working with the courts as well on this project, and the data's immediately pushed as soon as their, the device is synced, it's pushed to the court system, so they have the tickets almost immediately. So the efficiency on that side will improve as well.
And so instead of doing the triplicate or-
Correct.
-those types of copies, it's just the spill of paper to do the receipt? And then the efficiency on getting it to the court office, I think every once in a while, we would get people who would get a ticket and want to come right in and pay, and right now, it's what, a few days? Lag time?
Give or take a couple, three days. By the time it's gone through our process as far as approvals and everything else, Holly does experience that people come in, they want to pay immediately. And so hopefully this will expedite that, improve that efficiency, and make things better on their end as well. So it's a, it's a project through IT, the police department, and the courts.
And, and for municipal court, instead of dealing with paper, now you're gonna have the electronic, correct? Which is a very big deal?
Does it have the capacity to email the ticket to the people as well?
Email the ticket to them?
Mm-hmm.
No.
No, just to print out?
Correct.
Okay. Good, thank you.
It's a good idea, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Councilor Stefano? As usual, you're doing a great job. Do these devices cost a lot of money, or are they pretty reasonable?
The total project, I believe, we did some cuts during the project. There were some things that we took out of it because we didn't feel we needed it. I believe it was 119,000, if I remember right. The grant was 75% of that, and then we had the match money that we had in the budget from last year that we used. So we came in actually under budget because of some of the cuts that we made.
Awesome. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Is it your birthday?
No, no, sir.
No. Ms. Heather?
I, I think that's all that we have from an update for the chief. I, I do know Pat had some construction updates.
Sounds like you have a happy, happy dance to do.
I am close, actually. Give me three more weeks and we'll be dancing. The Parks and Cemetery Building, the last few weeks, we buttoned up the outside, the, the soffit material is in, the final, the final metal trim is in, all the exterior paint and stucco is finished. Inside, we've completed electrical inspections, plumbing inspections, everything is, everything is mostly done, pending a walkthrough, a punch list walkthrough with me and Harry and the contractor next Monday. We expect that, that they'll turn the keys over to us before the end of next week. Weather permitting, we'll get the parking lot paved next week as well, and that'll give us a little time to do a little, a little cleanup, a little necessary dirt work around the, the apron going into the, going into the garage, and just do some cleanup and some landscaping, and we'll be ready for, ready for a ribbon cutting out there. So, the multi-use pavilion, if you've been out, if you've been out there, you've seen all the structural steel is up, they've started sheeting the walls with a little, again, a little help from the weather. We should finish sheeting the walls and have the roof on it by the end of next week. That will, then we'll, that will allow the contractor to come in and start, start putting the steel and the cooling tubes and the insulation and everything in the floor in preparation of pouring the cold slab prior to the end of the month. So that's, that's moving along. Second Street, the pipe work is done. We're, right now, we're prepping the trench and doing the compaction testing on the trench. We're camera inspecting the line to make sure that it was installed, installed to plan, make sure they held grade, make sure everything looks good underground. We expect to be paving that towards the end of next week as well. First Street, open to traffic, so yay. And we painted some of the curb today and did some of the, just made some spot marks for the striping, for the asphalt striping. We'll close the street down next Wednesday during the day to do, to stripe the actual asphalt, paint the turn lanes, do, do stuff like that. And then all that'll be left is heat tape for, for some of the arrows and crosswalks and things like that. We can do that with, with, with the street in service. So we need to, we need to let the asphalt set just a little while before we, before we actually paint the asphalt itself. And I've told you about the railroad crossing, so if there's anything else, I'm happy to answer questions.
And Pat, I, I think on Second Street, you've gotten questions on some people wanting to know if we're gonna pave the whole street, which we're not, we're just gonna pave the section that was removed for the work. Is that correct?
Correct. We will be, we will be paving just only the trench. There are places where, where we'll go a little bit wider because the trench we made this time is right in between two historic trenches, and I don't want a little strip of, of old asphalt between them, so we'll pave trench to trench. But it's, yeah, we'll, we'll, right now, the plan is, is to simply pave the trench itself.
Very good. Councilor Viall?
Yeah, um, how, how, I drove on First Street today after I got your email. How, how First Street looks, what you've done, is amazing.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And then how that's starting to look with the hospital and what they're doing, it's gonna look out really nice. One question I had, though, was, you mentioned maybe about a month and a half ago, the hospital's making that new sign with all the rocks and that, and then you said there might be some questions you might have. Can you expand on that?
Yes. Unfortunately, when the hospital submitted their plans for, for staff review, a sign was not included, so we were not able to offer any guidance prior to the construction that had occurred. And unfortunately, there's, there's some, there's some violations with our code from setback, size, those types of things. We are working with them to have them go through the process, and staff is recommending, I believe, the variances for that, but it just, it needs to go through those processes. So it's unfortunate because it's really exciting, and it's great to see beautification right there, but it was just maybe people getting too excited and jumping ahead of some stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Ms. Heather is?
Um, I, I believe that is all we have from a staff perspective.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Holly? Anything? Good? All right, then we will move on to Councilor Coleman. Who has a council comment? Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I am fortunate, A, that Mandy dropped these off today, Honey Christapples are my favorite, so I'm very excited about that. The other thing is, this past weekend, I did attend the gala as well, in addition to the Oktoberfest during the day, and really felt like, even though it was rainy and cold, that it was a good, both events were wonderful, a great place for the community to come out, hang out, really kind of reminded me of some really neat things that happened in Alamosa, and it felt really good to be a part, a part of that. And so it was really, it was really, both events were really fun, and I think the Boys and Girls Club, I'm excited to see how much money they were able to raise during the gala, because I do think that they had some really amazing artwork and some other things that happened with the, with the auction, that I'd like to see how, how that went. So those, those were the things that I did.
Thank you. Councilor Viall?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, two quick things, and I know no one's running against me this election season, yet some, some things that I've, I've come to my attention in the other races, and I'm not gonna say names, but I just want to be very general with this, is that there's some, there's some candidates who are tapping into people's fears and why, what might be wrong with Alamosa, and how, how bad Alamosa might be. I, for one, and I know everybody on this council is, is here for, for positivity and what's the best in Alamosa, and, and I know the people who are running up here are, are want that, and they, and, and they're gonna keep moving forward with Alamosa, and, and what's positive about this place, instead of tapping into people's fears. And second thing is this, is that I've heard from a few people that some candidates are talking about the upcoming races as a Republican or Democrat thing, and I think that's just very wrong to be talking about. This is not conservative or liberal, Republican, Democrat, this is what can you do for the city of Alamosa to make this place better? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Councilor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I too had an opportunity to go to the Boys and, Boys and Girls Club Gala and the Oktoberfest event, and both of them were very successful. I mean, there's a lot of great things that are going on in our community, and I was really proud and pleased to be able to be in the presence of a lot of people, even, I mean, the Olympian Jackie Turner, Kersey, who came in, and, and she was impressed with the people in our community. We have so many wonderful people in our community, and I just want to thank them for showing up and support. I believe we had a packed house that night for that event, and I'm hoping, just like Counselor Daniels, we're hoping, hoping that they were able to raise a lot of money. The other comment I wanted to make was, earlier today, I had an opportunity to travel to Loveland, Colorado, to attend the Colorado Municipal League's Fall Conference, in which I'm proud to say our municipal clerk, Holly, was there in true leadership, representing our, our city in a great fashion. And I tell you, I had an opportunity to see all the things that municipal clerks have to go through on a daily basis in different municipalities across the state, and I could tell you, she's doing a wonderful job, and she's, she's really taking on that role and continuing to move it forward. So I just wanted to thank you and let you know that I appreciate being in your presence today with the rest of the other municipal clerks and hearing the positive comments that they had to say about you. Thank you.
We've got a need for an executive session. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 246-402.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Stand on, start voting, please. I need one. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. After our executive session, we will move back into regular session, and no further business will be discussed.